And there's a flood recovery update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. I know to the council and we've been here since the flood in 2013 that we've been working toward and then closing out that flood recovery for some time. We've, of course, reopened Riverside Park and we've opened our wastewater treatment plant. But even after those openings, the financial closeout of projects and grants has continued. So we felt that it's important at this point, we are all but closed out on all permit related matters. We have one more loose end related to the LOMAR, which is flood plain mapping related that we still have to finish out. That would take anywhere from a few weeks to months at this point. We don't have any concern, not in wood, that that will happen, but it's a matter of time there. So we did want to have an update to council though, kind of marking the closeout, our final report out on the financial end of the flood, the grants and city funding, just so that we're accountable for all of that to you in an open session like this. So that's what we're here for tonight. I will introduce, of course, our director, Jackie Trout, our accountant, Rachel David.
Yes.
And also we have a couple of guests who are very familiar faces to those of us who worked through the flood recovery process, Jim Raymond and Michael Haney from the State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. They were truly invaluable partners to us as we worked through the FEMA state processes for funding. So Jackie will have more on that. I'm going to turn it over to her, but I do want to mention that part of our presentation, first part of the presentation tonight is about just kind of remembering the flood. And we have a PowerPoint that includes some photo of the impact of the flood. I know that those are emotional for everyone in Evans and especially those who were directly affected. So just want to make that disclosure before we start.
Are you doing the flood video now?
Yes.
Since the river ran through my property and I'm still not recovered, I think I'm gonna stop now.
Okay.
What if you want to hear?
Yeah.
Let them speak and then we'll do the video.
I think, let's do this, let's do the video from PowerPoint then come. So we'll come get it, what does this video is for? Take it, does that work?
That's weird.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, take it away.
Want to continue or?
Oh, yes.
The rest is recovery and happy days.
You can tell our video is over.
We made it through. Great. We just want to kind of remember the impact, remember really during that timeframe, what some of the devastation was, what some of the recovery we needed to undertake. At the point, I think, years later, it's easy for us to forget, maybe a few of those pictures, a few of them, I think, hold a little stronger to each one of us, but it's important for us to remember. It's part of our history and Evans is better today and stronger today because of what we've become. And a lot of that couldn't have been done without some partners. Thank you, Jim and Michael, for being here today and having a few words to say later. They were a huge part in our initial recovery and success that we were able to undertake. A lot of other grantor agencies helped and stepped up to enable our projects to be successful. Our residents and first responders and volunteers, city council and staff were huge in that initial recovery effort as well as others like the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Colorado Water and Conservation Board was real great in stepping in on a couple of our projects as well, GOCO, obviously FEMA, DOLA. We had a number of agencies that really rallied around us for recovery to become possible for us. So that was really, really important. And just remembering the timeline of some of those pieces as well. So September 13th, 2013 is when Evans began to feel the impacts of flooding. Throughout September, we worked on cleaning up some of those emergency health hazards, really doing emergency recovery work. Repairs on the wastewater treatment plant began later that year in December of 2013. Road repair, design and construction began that spring, anywhere from 2014. We were able to get work completed on the wastewater treatment plant mid-2016. Road repairs completed later that year after a couple of versions of watch out and continued temporary repairs, we were finally able to get those permanent repairs done in 2016. And then the most recent, we were able to start construction on Riverside Park and the trails in August of 2017, which did open in October of 2018. While these events were going, you know, a hundred other activities were going on for debris removal, for ditch repairs, for lots of other cleanup efforts that had to be undertaken as well. These are just kind of some of the bigger pieces that had a lot of dollars associated with it that we will talk through in more detail as well. Rachel, go through that.
One of the major projects that we picked to talk about tonight was roads. We had funding provided primarily from FEMA and DOLA. As you can see, we had a FEMA PW 302, which was $961,000 and DOLA provided $517,000. We had a total of $1.4 million reimbursement. And these projects were repair of the damage to the road in areas such as Blantner Road, Industrial Parkway, 49th Street, Salida Court, and then the bridge on County Road 396. One of the biggest projects was Riverside Park and Trails. We had funding from multiple sources, which not only allowed us to recover what the park had been, but also enabled us to make it into something different and something new, something that the state has definitely benefited from and is a functional piece to our recreation. Some of the funding sources included FEMA, we had community development block grants, Great Outdoors Colorado or GOCO, disaster emergency funds and city funds. So as you can see, there is a pending piece here, like Jim mentioned, the piece is part of our closeout. It's just a part that retained during closeout processes. Right now, we are waiting for a FEMA process, which is the LOMR, Letter of Map Revision. As Jim said, we see no problems going forward with this. So closeout will proceed as soon as that process is finished. Overall, we received a total, we have received a total of 11.5 million. And with that piece that we're waiting on, we will receive a total of 12 million. Walking through those pieces, PW 997 was for the Riverside Park restoration. It included things like the ball field and the park equipment and the concession building. 608 is the trail restoration. 579 was temporary financing during the middle part. The two DRs were for earthwork and site grading and material management, such as a berm and also revegetation of the area. GOCO was local match for 608 and DEF was local match for 997. Another project we had was the wastewater treatment plant. The funding we received were for different phases. The first phase was PW 23 and that was emergency protective measures. We received $206,000 for that. And then we received money from PW 80 for temporary repairs such as emergency system pumping, cleaning the headworks facility and repair of damaged aerator. And then the biggest part, 1081, was permanent repairs. This was the repair and restoration of all buildings, the headworks buildings, the office lab and shop building and the pump station. The repairs here included structural and content repairs and we received a total of 2 million.
We did identify a couple of numbers that need to be clarified today. So in total, very, very similar, but yes, if you notice, a couple of small number tweaks. We had a couple of different reconciliations running, so got good formers here. We're happy to do that.
So this is a breakdown by project. Again, you can see some of the major projects like the wastewater treatment plant, Riverside Park and the roads. There are also a few that we didn't go into too much detail, such as the ditch or emergency response. So this chart kind of grouped them by similarities. You can see with the wastewater treatment plant, we have actual costs of 2.6 million and we were reimbursed the 2 million. And the city cost also includes local match. But overall, we sent, the city sent a total of $20 million and we were reimbursed for 16.3 million of those dollars.
As Rachel mentioned, we did have some city cost in that last table. So we've broken it up by two categories here. Local match, as Rachel mentioned, many of our grantor agencies had a required local match for us to receive those. So of all those products and all that work we did, about $1.4 million of that was local match that we had planned to spend in order to get the grant fund. We also have a category that's either ineligible costs or not reimbursable costs. I'm saying the difference here, we had some not reimbursable costs that we knew wouldn't be. We replaced a garage door at one of the wastewater buildings, knowing it needed to be replaced, but it maybe wasn't something that was specifically identified in a FEMA grant. It was a necessary item for us to do to complete the project the way the city needed. There were a few of those items. We also had things like legal costs that we knew were a necessary component of links in these projects too, but something that any other grantor agencies allowed for reimbursement on. We also had park construction management, a huge benefit for the city to ensure that a complicated project of that nature with all these different funding sources was completed appropriately. So we had city borne costs that we were aware of too that we undertook. We also then did have some ineligible costs. These are items that maybe initial emergency recovery, we didn't have a secondary receiver or, you know, small items here that we didn't have proper procurement on when we just needed food for responders or we needed something initially. The bigger component of that is the lagoon cleaning that we did at the wastewater treatment plant. So in a revitalization capacity, we did do a amount of lagoon dredging and de-wiring. That was necessary for proper operations of our wastewater treatment plant at that point, but was deemed ineligible for one of our projects. That was probably the biggest component of that cost. This is really telling, I'm really excited about this slide. A presentation that city council would have heard toward the end of 2015 would have included a graph on the left side there, which would have showed at that point in 2015, Evans had spent about $2.6 million in flood recovery efforts. And at that point, we had received reimbursements or anticipated reimbursements of just under $2 million. Fast forward in those years between, we were able to get additional funding sources like the community development block grant that enabled us to do a lot of trash removal at Riverside Park and build that park up into a mitigated flood zone. Those are huge costs, huge dollars associated with that. So as Rachel mentioned, at the end of this process, the city has spent $20 million. And I remember when I came in 2014, that was the big question was, what's this going to cost us? What is this going to spend? What really is the magnitude of what we will need to do to recover from the flood? And I remember at that point being like, oh, we may spend $10 million. You guys probably remember similar. There's no way, right? That was the question and we were $2.5 million into it, knew we still had a long ways to go. So to be at a $20 million point is huge. Look around at what improvements the city was able to gain from that amount of resource put into the community. It's amazing, we really are better for it. And the fact that we've received just shy of $17 million back from our partner agencies that have helped us to rebuild and to do so much with that is just, you know, I think you should feel very proud about what the city was able to accomplish with those resources and really direction and where we're at today with that. From that, we just want to end with, we have done, where we've come with $20 million and a small snippet of that. I know there could be an elongated presentation of pictures and probably things that you each think of, but we did want to share a few things. Yeah, so with that, I'll ask Michael and Jim again if you have any words to say or any thoughts. Yeah.
I'll just say a few things. Having a certain, just a little discussion, just a little remembrance of what happened, what the city of Evans experienced and what the city, is this reach? Close?
Or I can just stand there?
Yeah. Just so the audience can hear too.
Yeah. So my name is Jim Raymond. I'm with the Colorado Office of Emergency Management, Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management, as Jim mentioned. And it really is an honor to be here with you all. When the slide was up about halfway through the presentation that showed the list of partner agencies, I really feel like Michael and I are really here as a representative of all of the people that work for those agencies. What the tragedy really that the city of Evans and the state of Colorado also experienced in 2013 was certainly tremendous, a very terrible tragedy. But in my, in my observation, the city of Evans undertook an absolutely colossal challenge and met it head on to really rebuild a community in the wake of complete uncertainty and inability and really an inability to really maybe even move forward with so many things that happened. There was such an emotional component, such a financial component. And it required, in a way, in a tragedy that had not happened before in Colorado and for a small community like Evans. It really very, very honored to be able to stand here and look at these pictures and see what you have all done in conjunction with the local and federal and state partners. It really is, it really is fantastic. I really got to, I started working with the city of Evans very regularly in 2014, not long after the flood, but after that initial flood response. And I was just literally overwhelmed by all the stories I kept thinking about when I was thinking about all the different project work beats and all the damage and how we were going to get through that. And Evans was fortunate to be able to be grant recipients for a lot of different grants, many of which, some of which, which were very incompatible with each other. And there were a lot of challenges and a lot of problems that came along the way. And I was thinking about this on the way here, there was really a lot of opportunity to take some shortcuts and just kind of move through things to get to finish line quicker. But what I saw was the staff at the city of Evans stand firm and say, we're going to do this the right way and we're going to do this for our citizens. It's what council wants, it's what our leadership wants and it's the right thing to do. And I really saw that spirit, not only with the staff here, but really I got to see the character of the folks that live in Evans and it was an honor to be a part of that. So it's just, it's a really great day to see this and to honor that. Michael might want to say a few words and he really had an awful lot to do with actually the financial piece. So I'll turn it over to Michael.
Yeah, well, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. So yeah, my name is Michael Haney. I manage the recovery grants for the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management at the state of Colorado. So I will just be completely honest, Evans holds a very special place in my heart. So I was hired in 2015 to work DHSCM and one of my first assignments was, I was, you know, just a normal grant specialist, assigned work with Evans. And I will say, you know, Jackie, Elsa just made it, and later Rachel just made it so much, so easy to work with the town. They were always extremely professional, extremely organized. And it really was a great experience for me to start learning about these grants. And since then, I have now moved and I manage all of the FEMA public assistance grants. I manage all of these EQBDR infrastructure grants. I manage all of the DEF grants for the Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. But like I said, Evans has a very special place in my heart because they were really my first exposure to it and they just made it so easy. And I kind of wanted to just make sure you guys knew how hard that they worked and just the great job that they did in ensuring, you know, the reimbursement for the community. One thing I don't think you got or came through, I just wanted to also make sure that you're aware is those community development block grants, the 6.3 plus million dollars, those are competitive grants. You know, whereas the few ones where you got damn cheers money, these were competitive grants that they applied for and were awarded. And, you know, they actually, this community received the most funds from that pool in the entire state. It's largely due to, you know, their hard work and, you know, obviously the damages that you guys incurred. But also just the vision that the Evans had for their recovery. So many communities here in Colorado just chose to bring things back to the way that they were because that was what was easy, that's what was quicker. And you guys didn't choose to do that. You guys have a beautiful park and it's not just beautiful, but it's much more resilient than it was before. And so just putting a berm back that was going to get washed out again, you know, actually, you know, what we would call floodproofing, essentially the part to where the, you know, places that don't cost a lot of money are the places that are going to get flooded. It was a genius decision. I want to let you guys know that I talk about Evans a lot as I, you know, talk to other state public assistance officers and I talk to them about not just, like I said, building back the way that you had it before, but leveraging these other funding sources, building back in a smarter, more resilient way. And also just kind of the poster child for, you know, leveraging the community development block grant funds in a way that a lot of communities, again, you know, the narrow focus is just using it for local match, but, you know, that's not what you guys chose to do. You chose to build back a much bigger, more resilient structure. It's, again, just really inspiring. I'm honored to, you know, been able to work with you guys and, you know, thank you for doing such a good job. And yeah.
There was a couple of staff, I think, were key. They were key.
They were key and, you know, I don't think we can, we can forget, you know, the pivotal Brian Stone and Scott King were in every little Riverside Park meeting we had. And, you know, a lot of that was their vision into how to do that park as well. I'm honored other people have forgotten to us.
I think that concludes our remarks. If you have any questions, we can all read your answers.
Thank you. Thank you guys for being here tonight. Questions or comments?
I just want to say that, you know, I first came on council, I was appointed in July 13th, so I was only a couple of months at council when that stuff happened. And, you know, one of the things that I remember is how well the staff in the council and community came together and how well everybody worked together. And it's just amazing to see how far we've come over these last six and a half years and everything that's been, you know, completed and all the work that's done. And this city is just in a much better place and that's great. And it's, you know, one thing, it's, you know, the staff that worked on it, you know, then and currently, you know, finding all those grants, getting all that money, it wouldn't be possible and we wouldn't be in a place in the position we were if it wasn't for everybody working together. So great job to everybody involved.
I guess I just want to say that I hope that, I'm very proud of how the city reacted to this. Everybody was there, the citizens. I personally was just in water. So this really hits home, obviously, to me a lot. The one thing that I can say, and I hope that you use some words resilient, genius, smart, we don't yet because we haven't tested the new design. So hopefully, you know, everything works as what was designed. And hopefully we don't have to see if it really, if they designed or not and if our money was well sent. So anyways, hope, here's to hoping.
I just wanted to thank the staff and everybody involved. You know, I've applied for MIA grants in my day and I know how hard that is. And I know how it is to take the easy way and how much work goes into doing what's right. And so I just, as a resident, I appreciate so much doing the right thing for everybody. I think for those of us that lived here, that a day, a month, a week, we'll never forget ever. It was kind of that lean in and figure out what you can do and everybody huddled together. But live in a community that was so community driven, it wasn't about what good will I get from this, but instead how will I impact my community in the future is outstanding. I think everybody else should be extremely proud to know the goods that they've done for this community in the long term and so I'm very thankful.
Well, I was in a flood task force and I don't even, giving credit, more credit to do. And Jim has already mentioned several people. I would also be that, that our facilitator for that task was Cheryl Trent and Aiden Hung, Hogan, the former city manager, and also the mayor at that time while I was significant, started this process. And they worked hard with this staff at that time with Jessica and Brian Stone to get those grants started. And they were, fortunately, they were well with some people who were overseeing those grants so that we could get the vision from that task force out there and get it accomplished. And the current staff has just gone. accomplished. And the current staff has just gone way beyond, I think, in trying to get grants to minimize the impact to the citizens of having this restored. And I think it's, it's been great. And I'd also like to say that, you know, at the beginning of this, of the flood, you know, our, our police and fire, firemen responded brilliantly to try to ensure that there's no lost life, which there wasn't. And I think that's, that's, they deserve some thanks or two. But the current staff, Jim's put together with Jessica and Jackie, it just kept right on those grants and Brian, I'm sure too, and all, and many other staffers that I don't, I don't know, helped out with that process. And I really want to thank you for that.
I just want to say, I've been on the council the shortest amount of time. So I don't know as much as everyone else with the more detailed work, but to all of you, thank you for all of your hard work. Just from citizen point of view, I think you guys have done an amazing job. You know, for you guys, it wasn't just our city affected. And for you all, it's not just our city. They work, or the flow that you were working on, but other things for the city as well. So for everybody involved, thank you all from just, you know, as a citizen. And I think it looks beautiful what you, what we've accomplished. And you don't realize the scope of the work that has to be completed or the cost because even now it's over six years later and we're still doing some final detail work. And to see, like you all said, you know, the, now the cost, you, you look and go, oh yeah, that's bad, you know, but then we can see this, that was really bad. So thank you all. I appreciate it very much.
A lot of everyone said, I'm going to get short of myself. And I have watched everything that happened during that time, all the effort performed, taking, and I said, incredible thought.
It's not great.
I'm just going to say that.
How great you mean, you know, great staff, great leaders, partners have.
Thank you guys very much for being here tonight. I was on council when this happened. And one of the reoccurring thing when everybody touched on, but I'll do it one more time. From day it happened till today, can't compliment staff enough. You guys started from the minute it started, still work on it today, seven years later, six years later, whatever. Fantastic. I think our city faced opposition and faced head on and we're in a better place now because of it. And that is a lot due to the police, to you guys, to the city staff, and mainly to its citizens. People could just get up and walk away, but we didn't. We stayed and fixed it. And that's the biggest compliment I can give our citizens as a staff. So thank you guys. Thank you guys.
And I forgot to mention, I spoke with Kyle and sometime and probably maybe we're gonna, the volunteers are gonna be down there doing some work on cleaning up the brush piles. So let's make it even better. I mean, when I get that done.
Anything else, guys?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thanks. It means a lot to us. Next hour on the agenda is the 2020 organizational strategic work plan. We'll give it back to you, Jim.
Kind of feels appropriate to talk about what's coming after that presentation. So this is the annual, January, February timeframe where the staff is, as their bills in place for, for 2020, for the new year, just to come and present that work plan to the council, seek your, your feedback, direction, questions, make sure things are clear, make sure that our priorities and our, our plan of the year is, is clear. The work plan that City of Pecat is seven and a half, seven and a half pages of work and projects. And I was struggling a little bit with how to jump into that. So instead of jumping right into it, what I'd like to do is send a minute on where this work comes from, kind of on the structure of the work plan so that it's real clear for everybody, for council and the audience. So anything is anchored, everything in the work plan that you see is anchored to the city council's vision and the key performance areas that you established in September 2018. So the council took a better part of the day for a retreat and talked about vision for the city. That vision in Evans is a growing city with small town roots, providing a safe, family-friendly community. Then we further went to flesh out, and what does that mean? So that we can build work plans from that. So the key performance areas are really kind of what's additional detail? What does that vision look like? And we have six of those key, key performance areas. There are things like well-maintained infrastructure, safe and desirable neighborhoods with, with engaged residents, family-friendly, attractive amenities, resilient local economy, fiscally responsible government, responsive city services. So those are the things that council gave staff as vision and direction to go build work plans around to advance your vision. We also still have our, our mission statement, which has been in place for a, a number of years, which guides staff to remember that we're here for sustainable, citizen-driven services. Citizen-driven starts with this council and residents and your, your feedback that you hear and that our services really do focus on health, safety, and wealth of the community. Then you see our values, which were the product of a, probably a year of, of staff discussion, surveys at the staff level about kind of what should be hallmarks of our services and what should guide us in decisions that we make. And those are excellence, integrity, meaningful connections, and, and creative solutions. So that's the overview that I think is important when we start to look at kind of what drives decisions about resources and what we can get done in the year and what we can't. If we could go on to the next one, the work plan that you have has, starts with that vision, has the key performance areas, but we've also identified objectives, which are a little broader focus areas within those key, the key, the performance areas. They're still kind of, you know, help, they're a little broader than individual projects. I, I won't read through those, but you can have a look at them. They are represented in the work plan, but I just wanted to show on one page what our objectives are and how they align with your vision again, and the key performance areas. So if you don't care to have me read all of that, I will keep going and we'll go into work plan because those are the actual initiatives or projects. Thanks, Aaron. So this is the format that you see again, that vision and then each of the key performance areas, what, you know, council meant, and you, you came up with this language that's just to the blue there for each, each area. I'm going to look through these pretty quickly and just key on some that I know are projects that council has, has been particularly interested in. We were looking at these the past week in the leadership team, our, our department directors' meetings. All the, the department directors each have plans for the year that they kind of work out with, with me and we talk about we can get done. There are well over a hundred different initiatives, goals that your, our departments have. These are those that arise to the level of community and, and council meeting and probably importance to you. So it's important that this is our agreement for what we're going to be working on for this year because believe it, it's, this is, we are at full, full capacity here. So just to hit on a few of them, I'll ask him to try to keep up with me as we go. First, under unmaintained infrastructure, we're looking at some, we're an objective about the transportation infrastructure, our key projects, even though we have many more than this, but in that transportation arena, we have our 37th Street overlay, 37th Street widening. We know for this year, that's for sure the utilities portion. As we work with Excel realizing, we might have to complete the, the rib widening portion of that project next year. 23rd Avenue construction this, this summer for two lanes. Starting on East Side Stormwater Project design, I think we'll be starting on some construction, but most of that will happen over in that, in that two to three year timeframe. 37th Street widening design, hope to, to complete that this year. So we're ready to go as, as funding's available, we can manage the, the winding of 37th Street. And then completing the, the transportation master plan component of the comprehensive plan, which will include trails and, and other multimodal plans. And that'll give us that platform for, for future grants that we know is, is so important. We move through next one, additional, come back to that top page, sorry, the bottom of that top page. Additional funding for street maintenance. We know right now we're in the middle of the, our kind of completed staff portion of public information and, and engagements. We know the campaign is, is underway and we're also, staff's working to, has worked to facilitate council decisions about that election. Next page. There you see the comprehensive plan. That's probably a two-year project. This year, you'll be, council will be engaged with looking at current, current review of our demographic, demographics, some of what we call present state analysis, what really are the, the current attributes of the community, engaging appropriate community and staff for that comprehensive plan. Also updating your, your vision beyond the one that we've looked at, your vision for what Evans looks like and what land use vision will look like for the future. We're also doing more on our land use code and development guidelines to ensure that they're clear for the development community and meet kind of best practices. Looking at, continuing feasibility of water treatment with, with central world, working on a feasibility plan or analysis for extending water and sewer services south of the river so that council knows and to complete that comprehensive plan, the extent to which we can do that in the near term, it's important to know. And then also researching and we'll have some information for you this year on the topic of municipal broadband and what the kind of area, the northern Colorado communities are doing and have some options for, for council and how Evans might, might pursue better broadband service for the future.
Do we have people south and rear requesting services in areas that have already been annexed into Evans, such as?
Mostly commercial at this point. We do have, and as, as council knows, we've, we've had inquiries about additional annexation, which, you know, could, you know, kind of case by case can be good for us or not. But, you know, utility service in those areas is a good key part of that decision. We have, we know where we have some development, just certainly the Rocker area interest to keep developing things there. We have to be able to respond. So we just, we don't know how much we can do, how soon, but we need to have that, that information for what it's, what it's going to take to extend services there.
Well, it wasn't thought of 15 years ago when they annexed it. So I'm glad you're taking care of it.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll be started. So as we move through, still follow through some of the neighborhood commitments that we've made and conversations we've been having. Things like, like completing the, the Tuscany non-public irrigation system, the complete preliminary quiet zone analysis for Evans railroad crossings, Neville's Crossing non-public system improvements. And we also, one of, I think, the highlights for the year is we're going to try a block party trailer program. We've seen this, about this, this idea of some other communities, the city's trying to outfit to find hope, very, very much used, but still serviceable, a trailer that we can stock with things like traffic, you know, barricades or cones and door cables and coolers and things that the neighborhoods might need or want for a block party. We've seen this work where you can, you know, check it out with your driver's license or something. As a resident of Evans, staff would, would drop it off on a Friday, pick it up on Monday, make sure all the stuff's there. But we've heard that these kind, these, these kinds of things can be fun to help connect neighbors and get them out, have some fun with, with each other. So we think that that's a part of the neighborhood services and code enforcement program that we have for the year.
Kyle spoke with me about that and he went out and took a look at the trailer. It looks very nice from the outside. Be nice when they get it, Joe.
Willbrook Water under, this is the objective of sufficient security and affordable water supply, treatment and wastewater. We're assessing based on council's direction, purchase of the Willow Brook Water non-pot system. We are, are beginning a water rate study, RFP process, a wastewater RFP this year. We're doing more, we're doing more this summer with, to, with a, a public process around water conservation. You see some of our stormwater operations there, industrial wastewater pretreatment, following through on the work session that council heard about our need to start planning for our next wastewater treatment plant, infrastructure expansion there. Next page, please. So, and finally there you've got the decommission of the old Evans wastewater treatment plant. You'll have an agreement for engineering on your agenda for that tonight. So under the key, key, key performance area, safe and desirable neighbors with engaged residents, this is where a lot of our, of our code enforcement and safety initiatives are. One thing with the additional code enforcement officer we have now, that officer is taking on a lot of regular nuisance abatement and learning a lot from Kyle. But that's enabling Kyle to go and do some of the work, particularly right now in our industrial area, to look at some of the, the land use and nuisance abidance issues that we know have been longstanding for some time so that we get that area back into compliance with our code. And of course, the goal there is to make that area, you know, stronger, broader, industrial area that's, that others will want to invest in. So that's our, our goal there. Under state of the law, state of the art law enforcement services, council did approve two officers for traffic safety. So once those positions are full, are filled, our officers believe that we can increase stops by 25%. And of course, that's not, not the good news. That's not where we're, our outcome is there. But the last part is where we think can drive down those traffic crashes in the first year of, of full operation at 15%. That's only first year. So we hope we can drive it down a lot further than that. You see, finding a way within our current additional staff, our current other staffing, to establish a, a special investigations team to, to work with some, some more regional teams to, to address kind of ongoing issues that we haven't been able to resource, give the, the chief and commander credit for creativity there. We have the evidence, evidence tech position that you took from part-time to full-time. We're to be able to get back on track with evidence this year. We'll see impact fee studies to ensure, we think we can do a quicker process for this one, to put in place some, a, a better, more accurate impact fee so that as building permits are to be drawn this spring, we'll extract some revenue that we'll need for, for a police facility that we know we need long-term. And then finally, we've got some short-term, we're going to have some, some short-term police needs, facility space needs that we're going to have to address sooner than, than long-term. that we're gonna have to address, uh, sooner than, than long-term. Keep going. Under family-friendly and attractive entities, this is where we'll be able to capitalize on the purchase that not yet closed down. That's, um, the core open space adjacent to, uh, Arrowhead Lake. Um, start to, and also develop and, and implement a, I think a very modest plan for tract O, Tuscany, open space to complement the, the non-podable irrigation system as that budget allows. And that's just, those are just a couple that are kind of, uh, carryovers there from, from last year. Resilient local economy, you can see at the top there, that section, uh, there's a lot more development a- application happening, but we're still focused on facilitating those major developments, Solstice or Peak View, known as Peak View. Those Tuscany Corner developments, and the Tuscany Corner, Baggio, and also the, the Tuscany multifamily residential project, Wild Horse. Those are currently in that process, and we, we hope to see those to building permits this year. Um, under the objective of readiness for future high-quality developments, um, Allison Moting, Economic Development Manager, is working with the other departments on, on the economic development, uh, strategic plan, that council will be able to help us mold, so that we know that we're working on the most important things. First, um, you see develop, uh, a plan for Stonegate Industrial Park, that's one that we think could be ripe for development if the city was able to know that we had optimized kind of our own readiness, and basically infrastructure for that property. Um, and then we're also doing more web-based tools for, for marketing Evans. Move if you can, and then not to be taken off, this, you know, very high on our priority list, is to complete the, the development agreement for the southeast corner of Highway Eighty-five and Thirty-first Street, and move the process along, hopefully have a developed partner by the end of the year for the southwest corner of, uh, Highway Eighty-five and, and Thirty-first Street. So those are some of our highest economic development goals. Fiscal responsibility, again, you've got more, I've got the rate study, I think, twice in there, uh, it's that importance. And, uh, update impact fees, um, again, for streets and parks, to make sure that, that those are calibrated correctly for, um, the goals that we have now, and the development that we think is coming. And then we're also, a, a big project, it's not something that a lot of people see, but securing the low-interest loan financing for those high-priority south, uh, stormwater capital projects that council's been looking at is a high priority for us. Respondive, uh, city services, of course, coordinating the, the, the election April, high on our city clerk's mind. Redesign the city websites this, this year, we've made some tweaks around the edges, but we have some funding this year for a website, uh, re, redesigned to kind of bring our, our website up into, uh, what we think is, is more state-of-the-art from an access and convenience standpoint to, to residents. Uh, we're also putting together a website portal for cemetery maps and directories, so people can use our cemetery more easily. And then also, as part of that website renewal update, we'll be, it, it will be implementing more electronic permits for it all, and processing for convenience for the, the development community. Uh, HR goals, uh, we'll be studying our, our biennial every two years, competition classification study, make sure that we're, uh, compensating both as conservatively, but also as competitively as we need to. We're also developing a supervisory training program. Last couple of years, a lot of the change, we've been able to help, uh, to provide opportunities to allow our staff who've been working hard in their jobs. We know that those folks, as they take on supervisory roles, could use a little, a little more training there, and so we're, we're putting that together this year as well. I think the last page, we have doing IT security, audit and testing, um, reviewing the emergency operations plan. We'll have an update for, for council on that, um, coming up this year. Also, first, next couple of council meetings, you'll have, um, some options for public notification systems, for emergencies, and we're doing, it's important that you know that we're doing training on our incident command center functioning, and both kind of live incidents, or live action, but also, uh, tabletop formats. So, that, um, that is our, our work plan, subject to your approval and direction, questions, and any other priorities that you'd like us to include, um, be glad to, to hear our, our feedback.
Question for Jim?
I just had a chuckle, how are we going to use the cemetery more?
I hear jokes you make, but I'm not gonna do that one. For those coming to visit the cemetery.
I didn't know if you want more of us be, um, in the cemetery.
For that directory, and that one for just finding, uh, those who are there. We get lots of questions a- about that, a lot of people doing genealogical research. So this, this will be a tool that those folk can use much more easily than make sure that they, they catch Aaron or other staff on the phone, try and find it on an old map, this will be more, more current and accessible.
Genealogy research will definitely appreciate that, because that's, that's tough work, I think, I think. Digging through all those old records, they enjoy it.
Any questions or comments for Jim?
It's a year. Right. Thank you, council.
Five minutes, Council question?
I'll make, I'll make a comment pretty quickly. So we are eighty-five coalition, uh, last, uh, third day was a pretty good one. We had a presentation about spaghetti junction from C-DOT, I'm gonna try to see if I can get them out here to do a presentation. Total budget costs, like seventy million, redesign it, unfortunately, there's just no money yet, but they're thinking about doing it in different phases. You know, starting from, you know, sand and striping, to bridge replacements, or, um, the program cost and everything. But, uh, one of the things I took away from that was that if we had have seen the presentation beforehand, and we had our work session at the MPO to prioritize projects, I think a lot of other communities probably would have put that up in their upper tier. I mean, it still made the tier-one list to get in there, but it probably would have maybe bumped up to number one or two, especially after C-DOT came back and say, well, I know everybody's pri, you know, priority is I-25, which is understandable for the entire region, but C-DOT kept pushing that no matter what, I-25 is gonna get done. So, well, we would have known that beforehand, seeing this project, this project probably would have been bumped up into those, the top one, two tiers, so. But, uh, I'm gonna try to get them out here to do the presentation, what they have, it's, it looks really good and everything. Like, and I think you'd be impressed of what they've come up with for a design and creation of it, so.
Anyone else?
Oh, yes, we did get signs for the, the campaign committee that we dropped off, or at, uh, the chamber tomorrow for people to pick up if they wanna pick the signs up.
Did they cancel Thursday's meeting?
I have not heard anything. I have not.
Wednesday's, are they Wednesdays now?
They were gonna move it back to Thursday, the last meeting, but had conflicts with that, uh, deputy chamber meeting, but I don't know. Oh, they're almost, it's like two minutes.
Okay, we had that some time, um, meeting, um, so far, there's, um, a community event, there's a, on February nineteenth, they were up there. Uh, also, three, uh, Officer Peter Hatchey, she'll be speaking at the immigrant, uh, refugee center on the twenty-second of this month. And then don't forget, uh, Coffee with the Cop on February fourth, and then also, um, thirty-second, I'm sorry, I missed that for a second. So, um, please come to that, and also, uh, there was a question, and then, uh, I believe the chief is definitely, um, coming on this, but they'll be reorganizing the department, so they're looking forward for that, um, and that's all that I have. If you wanna touch on that, we're thinking about that, you're very welcome.
It's one, uh, opportunity we have, uh, we, we've had a, had a selection process, uh, unsuccessful. And, uh, they were talking to step up and reevaluate our structure, so instead of replacing that commander in short term, we're going to create and have a middle manager position, not lieutenant, and make that a development position for future candidates to be more paired with that command position, so. We'll be meeting the existing staff, I'm asking to bring more bodies for change, and bring layout and plays, and, and those.
Awesome.